Okay. Let's call the board.
I don't stutter.
It's, uh, Tuesday, September eleven, twenty-four, five, and six. Six, two.
Oh, your responsibility. Whoa. Yeah, yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. Well, me, too.
Okay. Just so. Did your mic rock? Yeah.
Yeah, here's.
You're one about to have.
Skip cut by.
I know.
They never understand.
They told me it was hot.
I'm not great. They do kind of.
I think it's a fan that's called Mary.
Okay.
There.
Oh, right.
All right. So where are calls in your order? Tuesday, September eleven, twenty-four, five, and six, all three. Um, local.
Mitchell.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
McConner.
Here.
Petrie.
There.
Wilsonberry.
Here.
Richards.
Yeah.
Rosales.
Here.
Schrader. Wyble.
Here.
Alex.
Here.
Ammons. Anderson.
Here.
Denzel.
Here.
Berksen.
Here.
Betts.
Here.
Carter.
Yeah.
Covert. Esri.
Here.
Holderfield.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kibler. Kurtz.
Here.
Langenhain.
Here.
Maxwell.
Here.
McGinty.
Here.
Michaels.
Here.
Wyble.
So here. We have the terms, um, Ammons, Covert, Kibler, and everybody informed me they're not going to be tonight. Um, before we now like have a, Mark Johnson, Anna, John, and then. Thank you. Um, seek approval of the minutes for the, uh, one's correct case for the home room. This is all second amendment, discussion on the mess. See no one in favor.
Aye.
Or opposed. No one in favor. Seek approval of the agenda and the agenda. You go, Mr. Carter.
Second.
So Mr. James. Discussion. Look out.
Um, are we going to have the discussion about the nursing home, uh, uh, loan request? So that you're moving the agenda.
Mr. Vicky, you got some finance, are we pulling that?
Pulling.
We're pulling items. Finance E one.
I'll move the removal of that item as an amendment.
Uh, there you go. Move out of hours, the second amendment, three, two, discussion on that. Mr. Vicky, you want to make a step up that?
No.
Okay. All right. No favor of the women.
Aye.
Opposed or opposed. Um, main motion on the agenda. Is this a discussion? Are you in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? I wonder, I should add, we only have one of those sections, not two. Um, public participation. Uh, communications from the board. Communications from the board. All right. Mr. Richards. The best of the social services.
Good evening, this is Justice of Social Services. First off, we have an agent's presentation from the event, John Carlson.
Either way. I'll stand. Uh, once again, I'm John Carlson, Director of Emergency Management. Appreciate you taking this time to, uh, coming for you to just talk a few minutes about the agency and what's been going on in this past year. We've had several, um, several initiatives that have been in progress and will continue. But first of all, for the first one, and that is the strengthening of the REC G. And for those of you that recall the REC G, which is the Regional Emergency Coordination Group, which is a multi-agency agreement that was signed between the county and the city of Champaign and Urbana, the University of Illinois, and public health, to bring together these eight, these jurisdictions, and more importantly, bring together their sub-departments that are related to an emergency situation. And also, when, if we did have to activate the emergency operations center, uh, that we jointly then would join forces to actually operate and, and, and work together during an emergency. We have planning or training exercises throughout the year and meetings and coordination groups that because of this agreement. So one of the tasks that we've had, and it's always in our forefront, and that is reinforcing that. Um, we've, um, we've, for the quarterly meetings, we've increased as far as the participation. We've had AMRIN, we've had some, uh, social workers coming in and, and talk about relevant, uh, problems and programs, uh, in the county. We've also been including in our monthly meetings, the Red Cross. We've reached out and had Rantoul Emergency Management, uh, hospitals, that sort of thing. So we're expanding kind of the scope of what we have because the whole idea is preparedness. Um, we are, uh, moving forward, we're continuing forward, and that is improvements on the emergency operations center, and, and that's just, that's, that's a journey. That's a continuing process of always looking for things to increase the operations center, to ensure that we can, you know, have it in a condition in this state that we're ready for an emergency. Um, we have, as I've mentioned, uh, in my monthly reports, we're establishing a countywide damage assessment team. Same thing, we're asking for, we're having individuals from all those jurisdictions come in. We have a training plan for, uh, November, and then we'll have, continue, um, it was a bonus next year, we'll have, uh, training and events on that. So that's again, just another level of preparedness that if there was an event or an incident of damage in the county, that we would have trained individuals. And again, it's a countywide, uh, activity, just as what it, the P I O group, or I think it's, their real name is called the Media Crisis Team. That's been in existence for quite some time, and we're continuing with that. For a matter of fact, now we have them, uh, meeting in our building at the E O C for their monthly meeting. So that's because that's where they would actually work out of in the event of, of a, of an incident. Um, tomorrow, there's the University of Illinois Parkland, uh, exercise, which is a federally mandated exercise that they have to do, but we're actually doing it at our E O C. We're kind of expanding it into an REC G kind of countywide type of activity, so it can test some of our, not only the, uh, physical facilities, but also some of the operations. Very short exercise, but we're looking for opportunities when we can piggyback on exercise at the county level or kind of the multi-jurisdictional, so we're, we're doing that. Um, the other thing we've been, another initiative, an S activation, we've gone out and actually seeked out, we've tried to reestablish contact with the various agencies so that in an event that there is a, a, uh, an incident, such as a fire and serious gas leaks, that type of thing, that we would be, uh, called out and be part of that. So our callouts, as far as having E one and having the command post call out has, has, has increased, as you can see on monthly reports, and there's also our fuel cost and that sort of thing. But I think it's, it's better involvement, it's greater involvement that we have. We've also used that for community outreach. We were at the, um, we've been up to Urbana, we've been up to Rantoul, we've been up to County Fairgrounds, and we'll continue to look for opportunities. And if any do have an opportunity that, that you have in a community where we can come out and we can bring E one and do, uh, community outreach and talk about preparedness to people, and of course, the command post vehicle is always a great attraction for both adults and children who come through and that sort of thing. Uh, we've teamed up that we have usually, we've had Red Cross come with us, and we've also had our local AM operator group, the storm spotter guys that come out and they kind of team with us, too. So we, we can provide that, and again, we've been pretty active on that, and we're going to continue as we, uh, as we go forward into, uh, into next year. Um, exercise support, another key area, and that's us providing exercise. For example, City, or Rantoul, has an exercise coming up in November, and we're actively working with them and providing either guidance or providing that extra support and maybe a timing with the state or other agencies, so that they can have their, they're going to have a, um, a weather-related disaster, uh, tabletop exercise later this year. And so we're supporting them, just as we support U of I and, and, you know, and other, um, we have a post office exercise, which is an annual. Um, volunteers, another thing that we've really reached out, we've been very active, and that, and that's soliciting volunteers. Not only looking, you know, we've always had a core group of, um, of storm spotters, and that's great, great bunch of guys and guys and guys. But we've also are reaching out for looking at, at additional volunteers and people, because, because we know in the community size of ours, with the diversity of, of backgrounds and that, that really, we're, we're very rich with the type of, uh, people that we have, and we call on to come in and, and to help us out. And so we've been actively supporting that. We've added storm spotters, we've added volunteers who can actually work in the operations center. Uh, we've also, of course, we have the, uh, red and scene, and that's the search and rescue team. And we've had an overwhelming, uh, uh, number of people that have come out and that are, are lots who volunteer for our search and rescue team, so that's, that's moving forward. And a matter of fact, this weekend, we have some training in I D S, and later this fall, we have some additional training, so that's, that's a very big plus. So we're, we're looking at where we can look at our volunteers, or our trained volunteers, where we can look at as an additional resource. On the monthly reports, we've been putting in the number of hours. You know, it's not an exact total with volunteers, but we're pretty darn close as far as the number of hours that our volunteers have been putting in. As you can see, it's pretty dramatic on some of the months when you see how many, how many hours these, uh, people are doing, but that's great. I mean, they want to do it, we can sure use the resources. So I think it's a win-win for everybody to get good-trained people to, uh, do that. Um, as far as with the grants, we've, um, uh, for many years have had the, um, the, the E M P G, which is the, uh, Emergency Management Program Grant, which is kind of the staples for most E M As throughout, you know, the county E M As. Uh, that has, we're anticipating a slight increase in that this next year, because the city of Champaign is no longer going for accreditation for, for their E M A. So because they've folded their E O C, their operations center, and with us at the county. So we, we, we anticipate we're going to see a little bit more in the, uh, revenue for that. And also, uh, earlier this year, we reactivated the L A P C, which is the Local Emergency Planning Committee. And that's something that we haven't had for a number of years, and that also is a, is a, is a grant program, too. Besides being a good thing to do, bringing both private sector and government, different, you know, a variety of people together to meet, to talk about hazardous material and talk about hazardous planning and that type of thing. And also, there is a, and we applied and, uh, and had that, you know, the grant for that, because that will also provide some funding for some conferences and that, and so, so that's, I mean, that's another good thing that we've done. How long this time I have, so, or, that's, are there any questions, or?
Does anybody have, or already have a question for?
When was the last time the E O C was updated?
Uh, it's currently being updated now, so we're submitting it to the state this Friday.
And is it accessible to county board members?
Yeah, there's only a couple of sections there that are really sensitive, and that's one I'm curious. But other than that, it's, uh, the rest of it, it's a public act.
And when an emergency does occur, is there a triage location for county board members to kind of, uh, pay information, so that the constituents know, uh, as to the state of affairs, or where they get supplies, materials, access to Red Cross, uh, salvation army, and information, general, information that would be given with the general public?
I can answer that two, two parts to that. First of all, yes, it would be the county E O C. That's where the, the information. He brings up a very, he bring up a very good point, and that is that another, you know, in today's world, with all of our, you know, cell phones and all, and all of the information that people expect, and especially people younger than me, I want to probably, but younger than me, that have, that expect, uh, to have, uh, information sent to them immediately. And, uh, so we, in emergency planning, one of the issues that we have out there, uh, is how are we going to be able to get this information out to the public? And it's one of the initiatives that the, our Public Information Group is working on, because we have Facebook, and we have, of course, we have websites, and we have, and, and a lot of the agencies have their own Facebook page and their own website. So it is, is, is a very relevant, relevant issue that we have right now. And how are we going to disseminate information and ensure that we're all saying the same thing in an emergency? So, I mean, we're, we're, it, it is an issue. We're, we're on it in the sense that we, we have the, the ways to get the information out, both, you know, going to the media, through television, and, uh, and on our websites. Of course, we are working on, how can we do it that way? Because we realize that there's so many agencies, and the hospitals have gone out, and all in good faith, just like us in E, at E M A, we have our own Facebook page, we have a website, but yet, since we have all that, how are we going to make sure that we're all sending out the same information? And getting that, that, that test information out?
You send out a clinical alerts, like the university bills would stand up and, and, and students. They would, it's a twenty-hour warning, they'll send out a line hours, by way to our cell numbers and email numbers and whatever contact that we have provided to them, that's, that's how you test the content.
What we recommend is that as an individual citizen, that the best thing that you can do is to have a weather radio. Because, you know, you have the outdoor sirens, but that's only good for outdoor. A lot of times indoor, then you can't hear it through, because of the wind and that sort of thing. They're really primarily set up for outdoor. So the best thing that we recommend that citizens have is the weather radio, because that, the National Weather Service will put out very accurate, very timely information on that. The next thing that we're, we're currently working through, and there is a program that you can sign up for right now on MyStates, and MyStates is a service that you, as an individual, can sign up for, and then they will give you the text message from the National Weather Service. We're working right now with MyStates to look at how can we expand, for using it for our own use, for, for notifications. But we, you know, for, uh, we, it's, it's just an issue that we're working through right now on how, because a line I has certain regulatory, uh, aspects involved, and the universe does that, but even with the university, as an individual, you have to sign up, so it's not, you know, we can't, you can't force it on. But, uh, we, it's right now, we recommend to use MyStates and have the weather radio.
So I know in the city of Champaign, uh, all of a sudden, the city hall basement is converted into a triage location. Council members are coming to come in, to, to, uh, dissemination of that information, I'm just wondering if, do we come here, or do we go to, 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 you know, to gather that information? But if I have no power, how about if my battery, I'm old, I can't handle my phone, and, and access my own cellphone? And thus, how would we, it goes out very often in the county? So I was wondering, sort of physical location where I could go and gather the most latest current information, so that I could, uh, provide that citizens, we, uh, preseason.
If we're in that situation, I would come to the, uh, come to our operations center, because that's where we're going. So that's, that's, that would be the, because what we'll do is, is if the, if the operations center is activated, the leadership of, you know, law enforcement, fire service, um, uh, the elected officials, you, the leadership comes to the operations center.
The county board is represented by the county board chair, who is sceptified of everything as it happens, and is a part of the emergency operations center. I believe what you're talking about at the city of Champaign is they previously had an E O C, and now, as Mr. Carlson said, they're folding that function into, they're not going to have their own separate E O C anymore. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but, but it will be operated from the Champaign County E O C, which is in our building at nineteen oh five. Um, I think if the county board members themselves want to know how they should react in an emergency like this, that's an issue for you to bring up with the county board. County board members themselves, we would not expect twenty-six other county board members to, to show up at the E O C. The board chair is there to represent the county board. And from there, I'm sure the information can be pushed out from the board chair, but quite frankly, the public, the public information officers are pushing information out in a way that is hopefully consistent and reaching all of the citizens at the appropriate times with the appropriate information. Right?
Could have said it better.
Great. And John, we've had some inquiries. We talked earlier about tours to the county board, the E O C and local E O C. Can we get that, I'm amazed, in the next month or two? So everybody who hasn't had a chance to see that and see our facility.
That was going to be my opening comment, and I completely missed, I, I, I overlooked my notes. Well, what I'd like to suggest is Thursday, October fourth, at, is four thirty a good start time? Is that? Okay, four thirty. Okay, Thursday, Thursday, October fourth, at four thirty. And we, um, you know, we can, we'll just last as, we'll stay as, I guess the latest we have to or need to, but, uh, what we'd like to do is, um, is that we'll have an open house, and we'll, we'll have the, the emergency operations center downstairs in all the rooms. Uh, we'll have a folks hold on up and, uh, and operate to be able to show you that. Also, we'll have the, uh, E one, the emergency command post vehicle outside for, so we'll, we'll have it staffed up, so if that, if that works, and if we can't all make it, we can always do it some other time, I guess. But, but I, but I, thank you. I, I, I have brought that date with me.
Thank you, asker.
Four thirty until when? Um, how late should I stay? Well, say about six.
I'll send that in for the limitation that does the all-inclusive hours and the board members just came by during that timeframe.
He'll probably be like four thirty to six. Say four thirty to six, okay. That's it.
Uh, to follow up on a few of the items that Mr. Rosales has brought up, I'm on the website now, and I'm looking for the, um, emergency management plan. Do you have it up on the website? I just found, I found it. Is that something that you'd be putting up on the website?
I, I, we don't have any plans to do that when we get the new one, but I, what we could, we, except for, except for the sensitive items.
Right. I understood that you mentioned some.
Sure.
Certain aspects of it. Okay, that would be probably.
Well, the only, the only thing, just a, we're, we're submitting the new, the updated version of, literally, this Friday, it's going to the state, once we get the state approval.
Right, I understand.
They may tweak, you know, wordsmith a little bit, or tell us we have to change a little bit, which is, you know, no problem. And then that, uh, you know, assures us of our accreditation and all of that, but sure, absolutely.
No, I understood that it wouldn't happen yesterday. And then second, um, I'm looking for information, who makes up the emergency planning committee? And I don't see any information about that, because, again, am I missing that on the website?
Were you referring to the, uh, the L A P C? The, as I thought it was linked to the, uh, Local Emergency Planning Commission, Committee on the Left, that side, L A P C?
I'm looking at B D's documents, reports. Anyway, maybe, maybe you could just double check.
Oh, well, it's, never mind.
Okay. Thank you.
Pat, see, the county's operation plan is, uh, I think anybody from the county board can see it, but there's, there's parts they don't want to make public, and general standard operating procedure, and it's, at least in the state of Illinois, is not, it's like the whole thing. But, but sure, John.
Yeah, I think in the past, they do it like the life public library has one copy or, or that type of thing, so it's been, but yeah, we, we should, we should.
Do you have any other E M A questions? Any, anything that's been burning anybody's thought for a few months by emergency management, Chip? We'd ask John what we have here. Okay? Thank you for coming, John. Uh, we all have a, I think we have a couple more questions on the reports, because that, that wasn't on the website, so we'll go over that on the, the next item, but thank you for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Our second item is the monthly reports. Would anybody like to make a motion to?
Making anonymous motion to place all on file.
Jack.
Seconded by, uh, is that a question?
It is.
Second. Uh, not too much out of the ordinary happening with the, uh, I, I guess I should. John went over most of the stuff on the two E M A reports that are on the website. Are they on the website now? Okay. Uh, as he was, as he was saying, the June report for July largely focused on upgrading the E O C capabilities for communications. Uh, the L A P C did its first meeting in July, and there was also a presentation on, uh, non-English, non-English speaking individuals' needs during an emergency. And last month, and feel free to chip in, John, if there's anything else you want people to know. And last month, uh, was quarterly meeting of the infectious disease working group, uh, as well as the county damage assessment, the redevelopment team, that is the first meeting on the seventh day. Uh, animal control numbers, public defender numbers, and, uh, J D C were all within the normal range. Uh, is any, anybody got any questions on these reports or discussion? While in favor of placing these on file, say aye.
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 Uh, motion to put those on final passes. Is there any other questions? Okay. Under the chairs for report, let me give everybody an update on the jury commission and the task force. The jury commission, uh, is definitely winding down, but it's still doing outreach to make sure that people know the importance of serving on juries. We had a table at C U days and passed out some of our, our information. We have a, a number of flyers and posters made up about the importance of juries, and we're continuing with our monthly outreach, uh, educational show, W B C P, as, as well. But that's, we're basically to the point where we have everything set up we want to do, and we're just continuing the outreach, the education, and the community about the importance of serving on juries. The task force met last night. The task force continues to bring in stakeholders, and we've been, we've been pretty successful at that. We've had the state attorneys come in, the sheriffs come in, we've had members of court service come in, both to discuss their programs, and also hear about some innovative approaches we might bring in, like Clay County has a pre-trial services division, which, uh, if people are minimal to, we might be able to emulate here and decrease the population in county jail. Looking, looking at some things, but of course, largely the impediment for most of the things we want to do is, is money. There's plenty of things that, uh, the state's attorney, sheriff, public defender would love to do if they had money, but we really don't. But we're, it's a big job, and they continue to, to look at this, and they're building towards eventually having, uh, putting together the report for everybody about this. And we're going to be meeting again on the twenty-fourth, at Monday, the twenty-fourth, at six P M. If anybody would like to. Uh, we had a pretty robust public participation last night, uh, we had a full hour, and so I think we're, we're starting to get the, the conversation over there about some, some of these justice issues, and if anybody wants to come, uh, look at, uh, programming or see what the task force is doing, you're certainly welcome. Are there any questions on the task force or the jury commission? Okay. Well, that, there are no items that we need to put on the concerned agenda, and that concludes justice. Thank you, Elliot.
Policy personnel, partners, or, or, Mr. Wilsonberry?
All right. Good evening. Um, first thing on policy, uh, the pair of Greenwich District nominations. I'm going to, I'm going to pay now. Thank, yeah, where is?
Where is?
Can you, can you proceed with your nomination?
I will nominate Mr. Brian Knapp for San Jose number five, please, District, and San Jose for six, please, District. Uh, number one, probably, for August thirty-first, one fifteen. Second.
Second, Mr. Esri, uh, vice, we've got dispute to these nominations.
Uh, both, the San Jose five, San Jose for six, I don't know very far, very distant, so, I think entirely you could say so. I have no idea why they have the same people on both, we've been doing that for years. Uh, Mr. is a very good question.
All right. Any questions?
I mean, you kind of just asked my question. Are there other districts that are known like this?
No, no, I tried to figure out what happened, but.
All right, further questions? All is in favor, seven five, I say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay. Uh, next on our list, we have a report of the county clerk, which county clerk is here, so if you have any questions, please. so if you have any questions, please. First, we seem to place them filed. Second, Mr. Betts. Seconded by Mr. Moser. Any discussion? No questions? All those in favor signify the same way. Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Uh, section C, uh, county administrator, regular reports.
The monthly report is there for your information. That's questions that you have the answer to.
Moving here, you seem to place them filed. Seconded by Ms. Betts. Uh, seconded by Ms. Pusenberry. Any discussion? Pat C.?
I have a couple of, uh, confirmation questions under the annual report. Um, could you explain a little bit about a category response to employer protest and then appeal of denial on telephone theory?
Pages four and five. Well, there were two cases, uh, where there was an appeal. I mean, what, what, what information do you want?
Well, having ever applied for unemployment, I didn't quite know the procedure for this.
Um, well, there is a process, and unemployment notifies us when they receive a claim from a higher employee of ours, and we have the ability to provide them with information as to whether or not we believe that unemployment should be granted, and then we can appeal the decision that they made, as can the claimant. And with regard to the telephone hearing scheduled, um, we did have a telephone hearing on an appeal last Friday with regard to the, I am aware of the, of the, uh, unemployment claim from the board of review. I don't do them for everyone, so I don't know about them at all. Thank you.
All right. Further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Uh, the next item is for your information. Please, uh, put these dates on your calendar with regard to employee recognition week. Um, if you have any questions about it? Question?
Um, is, is the time for the R B C recognition correct, eight thirty to two?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Uh, moving right along, uh, the next item is, uh, recommendation from the job content review board, uh, to make two changes. Ms. Goozy, could you speak to that?
Sorry. Um, as you'll recall, last month, we received a request from the county clerk to have free position classifications within his office, reviewed and evaluated by the job content evaluation committee. The committee met and, um, is bringing back two recommendations with regard to two of those positions. The first is a technology specialist, which is summarized on page nine. Um, effectively, this position has increased in points. It was previously in, um, grade F, and the recommendation is that it move to grade G. However, this does not result in promotional increase for this position, because the, um, I T positions in the county, um, over the past ten years have received a market adjustment, which means we had to pay a salary higher than the grade they were assigned to in order to compensate them consistent with the market. But over the last three years, as we do these, we've reviewed them, because the market has changed for I T jobs to an extent. So part of the evaluation for this technology specialist position was to also do a market adjustment, and the committee does recommend that the position be classified in grade G, but no, no longer recommends that a market adjustment is required.
Move approval.
Second.
Move by Mr. McGinnity, seconded by Ms. Rollandheim. Any discussion? Any questions? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passed unanimously. And now, uh, moving into section D.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Um, the second position that was evaluated was a senior election specialist, and based upon the evaluation and review of this position, it is recommended that this position, which was previously classified in grade, range E, be reclassified to grade range G. Um, this position is somewhat unique in that both incumbents are members of the AFSME general bargaining unit, so, um, we will have to ultimately negotiate with AFSME to complete the effecting of these changes, but your approval is required before we move forward with that. The current AFSME contract is silent on the issue of promotional increases, so based on silence in the bargaining contract, we usually refer back to our personnel policies. You'll see on page ten that the recommendation is that we would recommend negotiating these upgrades with AFSME, that the positions received the greater of the ten percent increase are going to the seller range minimum, and I've outlined, um, there, and on the, um, report, on page, sorry, on page sixteen, what the effects of those would be. So the current incumbent, well, actually, that's more the, I'm just asking, see, move to approve the grade assignment for the senior election specialist position at policy.
So move. Okay. Move by Mr. McGinnity. Seconded by, can you speak here? Can you second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion?
I would appreciate a little bit more explanation, um, of why the committee, uh, recommended a jump from E to G.
There is a substantial change in the responsibilities assigned to these positions, which is probably partially due to an entirely different management style in a county clerk's office than existed ten years ago when these positions were last evaluated. But, um, this, this evaluation in grade range G for the responsibilities that these positions currently have is consistent with other positions that are classified at that grade. Thank you.
Courtney, do you like that? Do you think that?
The, the senior election specialist position is filled by two incumbents who bear an enormous responsibility for ensuring our compliance with the myriad federal and state regulations that have, um, developed in election administration, especially since the Help America Act took effect in two thousand and six. Things like ensuring our compliance with deadlines for sending overseas ballots for our military and for citizens living overseas, running our absentee ballot program, um, ensuring ballot creation compliance, training of our election judges, and those new responsibilities that have developed in the last five years or so weren't reflected in the old job description. We submitted an updated job description in consultation with the employees to the job content evaluation committee, and they're the ones who are recommending the position. We recommended the evaluation.
Thank you. Pat C.? I have one last, uh, question. Uh, but somebody, however, you better understand, um, so the county board approves or disapproves, and then it moves to AFSME. Um, what weight does our approval or disapproval have to business then?
Tells us what we can present to AFSME.
But then they can make any decision they want?
No. It has to be negotiated, and I would say we're going to negotiate strongly for the position that is then adapted by the county board, which reflects the process that we use for evaluating all the positions, including the AFSME positions. But because they're subject to collective bargaining, we can't just change the terms and conditions of employment for any bargaining employee without also talking to their bargaining agent. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
The last position was, um, the lead tax extension specialist position, and when the committee began reviewing this position, we had a concern about the current classification of the position as non-exempt under the Fair Labor Standards Act, so we requested a legal opinion on that and have not received a fact yet, so we will be bringing this position back to you after we finish the evaluation, probably next month.
All right. So you actually. Okay. Now moving on to section D. Um, we have an amendment proposed in Champagne County report minutes. Miss, Mr. McGinnity is moving approval.
Sure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
If I stand?
The amendment is stated. There you go.
All right. Stan already got, so, all right. Um, any, any questions about the, the, Mr. James?
Well, I was going through all them blue markouts, which I'm sure Pius did, because I've read some of his emails, but on page twenty-four, under appointments, should they not read, members of the liquor advisory commission shall be appointed by the Champagne County Board Chair, subject to the approval, not approve? And then as you go on and read that, I got a little confused, because it says, members shall be appointed for the remainder of the term of the county board chair which appointed them. That gets a little bit wordy. I think you can clean that up a little bit, just say, members shall be appointed based on the remainder of the term of the present county board chair.
I think this is done, no chance.
Well, you put chair in there, Mr. Wyble.
We'll make work.
I hope so. So I, I would say this probably needs to go back to the chair to clean it up before we vote on it. And he's going to disagree, but he needs to learn to clean up his side.
Mr. Wyble?
Thank you for that. I'll have legal approval.
That's good reason. Thank you.
All right. So, um, we're going to withdraw this. Move deferral, someone?
Why can't it be voted on, and then at full board, you get to clean up the interaction?
Okay. So if, we have, Mr. Parliamentary, we have a question on our, on the floor. Can we withdraw?
I think we can vote.
There was no motion to the board like that.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to defer to the full board meeting this month.
No, point of order. If, if, if you can't go to the full board meeting, ask it come out of this meeting first. And if it comes out of this meeting, it goes to full board. We don't need it deferred to the full board meeting. It's all right.
You, you can move it to the full board with the caveat that the language cited be cleaned up for the burden that you vote on at the board meeting.
That's not brand.
There are more reasons.
My fault. There is a reason why we can't send this to the full board, but it's amended to the full board.
All right. Lloyd?
Yeah. It really needs cleaning up.
Okay, so are we ready to vote on this with the?
Well, what bothers me is, you don't even, if people has got the work under these conditions, don't even have a say about changing some of these rules. Why is that?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Looked like a meeting, whose ideas is this?
It's mine, Mr. Carter.
Huh?
It's mine.
I don't think you can make that big decision for all of them.
I'm asking the board to do it.
Well, if it hadn't been me, I have a little respect, and at least had a, a meeting, asked somebody that they want to put in the table there. I think that's been probably the thing to do.
Mr. Carter, I believe this is the meeting for that to happen, and that's what we're talking about.
To me, you don't sit down and, and, and make the game rules of the game, and put it on the playing field before somebody know how to play the rules.
But this is the committee.
That's the way I feel about it.
So are we ready to vote on this with the expectation that it's going to the full board? Wait. Pat C.?
Well, it's my understanding that this suggestion is to, um, waylay a, uh, commission that doesn't have much activity, and if it gets appointed at the beginning of a chair's term, and it's supposed to exist to the end, and the purpose of the appointment got taken care of in three months, and it still is hanging around, so if we change the wording so that for the duration of the purpose of the appointment, that would take care of that.
Mr. Wyble?
You don't know how long it's going to take when you appoint a mission though. That's why you appoint it. If it runs to the end of the term, fine, we're done with it. You need it again, you reappoint them. You can't, you can't appoint a mission if you're going to do this, but you don't know how long it's going to take.
All right. Are we, are we ready to vote? Does everybody understand that the language is going to be cleaned up between now and the full board meeting? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay. Pat C.? All right. Um, and the last item on the agenda, which is here for discussion only, uh, is with regard to a proposal that, uh, Mr. Alex has worked on, uh, with discussions with others, and I would yield the floor to Mr. Alex to, to speak to the, to the, the question.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. Uh, this proposal originated after a discussion that I had with, uh, Mr. Maxwell, uh, based on feedback that we've heard from other board members and department heads with regard to the advantages of the old standing committee system, uh, and/or the advantages of the committee of the whole system. Uh, the general concept here is to take, uh, the three areas of county board responsibility, which are essentially operational and for which there is an associated department head, those being highway and Mr. Blue, facilities with Mr. Reinhardt, and E-Luck with Mr. Hall, and to break those off as standing committees, as they were in the past. Uh, we believe that the standing committee format offers advantages for this type of a, of a, for these areas, uh, because of the benefit that accrues from discussion in small groups, uh, and we believe that the department heads will be more comfortable having a committee that they can bounce ideas off of in this format. Uh, we would retain a committee of the whole meeting, one committee of the whole meeting a month, uh, for finance, for justice, and for policy, which areas that are more general and that I think, uh, definitely benefit from the entire board having a say in at the committee level, which was, of course, one of the initial goals of the committee of the whole structure. Uh, so this is essentially an attempt to get the best of both worlds, standing committees in areas where we feel they can be most effective, and committee of the whole in areas where we feel that it can be most effective. Uh, as Mr. Pusenberry said, this is for discussion only. Uh, I'd like everybody to consider this. Uh, I have no vested interest in this. I think it's a good idea, but if it's something that the board's not interested in doing, I'm happy with the status quo. Uh, this would, if we do take this up, uh, this would be presented for action at the policy committee of the whole meeting next month, so again, no action now, but, uh, we wanted to get this out early enough that people have an opportunity to weigh in on it and, uh, and, uh, propose any suggestions. Uh, a couple other comments. Uh, there's an error at the top of page twenty-six. Uh, it said there would be twenty-seven members of the cow that should read twenty-two. Uh, obviously, there only going to be between two members on the board, uh, the other numbers, I believe, are all correct. Uh, and my other comment is that, uh, the material that's presented in the packet is the, to, the best of my understanding, is the current county board rule ordinance, and the only thing I have tried to change are the changes necessary to accomplish the three standing committees and the one cow. So if you see any other changes in there, they were inadvertent. Uh, but because you now have the entire county board rules document in front of you, uh, I think also open for discussion are any other changes that we'd like to make to the county board rules, so it'd be nice if we could deal with all of these, uh, at once. And again, uh, final comment, this is obviously for the next board, because it's not taking effect until, uh, the new twenty-two member board is appointed in September. Thank you.
All right. I will take responsibility for the type on page two. All right. Uh, any, any discussion? Mr. Moser?
I like his idea, but I think all the had-beens in here shouldn't have anything to say about, about the next board, so I think it ought to be the next board.
All right. Ms. Richards?
I'm simply bringing back one. These, I think these three were the main working committees, the other three are more going on the policy, but I think it doesn't address one of my main concerns with the cow now, and that with having policy, justice, and finance together, you're, you're kind of going to have a monster cow, and I think one of our problems now, committee of the whole. Uh, what about, and I think one of our problems now is sometimes these committee of the whole meetings can drag on for four hours, and if you're the last committee, everyone's tuned out sometime, all these officers. And while it brings back the working committees, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't really address that. I'm not saying we necessarily need a third meeting for finance, but I don't know that this satisfies all my concerns on something like that on the current committee of the whole.
All right. Ms. Mike?
Although I can appreciate Mr. Richards' comments, I'd rather disagree with that. I, I kind of like these three grouped together, quite frankly. Um, I think they do kind of correlate with each other, and I'd also like to have one person in charge of the whole meeting all night, um, and that way it's a little more consistent with things too. And that way, it's a little more consistent with things, too.
Is that commentary in place?
You're welcome.
Mr. Hurst, any news?
Thank you. I've looked at this. We've been talking about this, and I want to thank Mr. Carter. It has been discussed, ever since Mr. Carter and I were on the Highway Committee together over at the Highway Department, and we have been working with Jeff Blue on a close basis. We've lost that communication with our department heads, who work so diligently to put together the most important, I think, of the three committees. And I agree that sometimes the COW does stretch out, but I think these three committees have a tendency to be shorter than the ELOC and Highway and the others. So I feel comfortable with this scenario. I'd like to see us make this change accordingly.
Mr. James?
Well, when I looked at this, I would just, my mindset was Highway and Transportation, we've had some of those discussions, that in my mind goes relatively fast unless there's something major going on. But finance, there's times I've honestly sat here, by the time we get to that, by the time we get good at so many numbers and things you need to look at, and really it's an important part. And I will, Brad Jones used to serve on that committee, and I always go to Brad with any questions, because he really got into it. But to me, I would group Highway and Transportation back in and put the other two that you highlighted, and put finance on itself. Because also, just like with the Predgers here, there's times he gives a report or updates, and we discuss bond issues or what have you. And we really need to be hearing that, because that's the backbone of what we do. We need to know where those funds are, and where we're going to get some of this money that we're always wanting to move or to do something. So that's my two cents. Then like with Diane, I would think when we have a COW, or any committee, that you have a Chair and a Vice Chair. But when we have a COW, then we have different Chairs moving up or people moving around. It just seems to distract a little bit. And I know that people like to have their day in the sun as being the big chief. But you know, as long as the job gets done, that's all I care about.
Mr. Rosales?
Yeah, we have proposed this change, because I was one of those proponents to change to the COW committees. And we sort of re-fried this chicken over and over and over by this board many times. So I would tend to concur with Mr. Moser regarding creating any changes prior to the new board committee. You can change the rules within the stream. Let the new board decide whether they want to continue with the current COW structure, or create a proposal for a different type of structure. The reason I voted for these COW meetings is that the way it was proposed before, you only, out of the six committees, you were only allowed to sit in two. So there were four committees that you, one, did not have a vote on, two, you could still attend and give the information that you so needed and required, but you still did not have a vote during that period of time. And because a lot of people indicated that they could not make six meetings a month, plus a regular board meeting, which would be seven meetings. So that's why we condensed it to two meetings, to make those county board meetings a little shorter, so that that discussion could occur during the COW meetings and not occur during the county board meetings. Right now, as we sit, we have long county board meetings that last three to four hours. And thus, having two committees to discuss this information. So I could imagine how the regular board meetings would be by individuals not sitting on these other committees and not having that information updated, having the discussion that the citizens bring on to these meetings, and that discussion that occurs during those smaller committee meetings, where the citizens could come up and discuss the issue at hand. So I would tend to disagree with this proposal. I don't know why now, two months before the election, this is being proposed before the new county board sits in in November of this year. So I would tend to oppose this whole, and I would say hold on to it until the next board decides what they want to do. New ideas, new mind frames, and I think new people will give a new direction to this board with the new seating arrangement.
All right, Mr. Wyble, does you want to speak?
I'm quite out of control of my procedure, by the way. Part of the county board, both going on, I would rather not do as a small proposal, although I understand how it feels. However, if the members of the board that are not going to come back could go up with the passes at the same time, it would be a mess. However, I'm putting out that as Chair, I would have to do that. I will vote as, I will ask the caucus, my caucus, to vote. The caucus, we have a lot of people voting for us.
Okay, Mr. Ricenti?
Most of the people that are going to be continuing on this board have either been present at these meetings, or have seen how this has been working for a while, or are currently on the board. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't deal with it at this point. I also think that for some of us who've experienced both types of structures, it's not a bad idea to have our input in voting process for what this next board may be operating as. Next board can always change it. But to have the next board hit the ground running with structure and one less thing to have to deal with and worry about makes some sense to me. I think the timing's very appropriate. I think that the proposal is reasonable. You know how I feel about basically being pro-COW, but this makes sense, because it does address, in a logical, sensible, thoughtful way, breaking down three committees that have expressly desired the opportunity to break down issues on a more personal basis. It, I think, makes very good sense. And also, in conclusion, I think this gives me an opportunity, as somebody coming off the board, to finally tell others what to do after being told for eight years what to do.
All right, I have Mr. Carter in this holder field, and then Ralph, and then I'll get to second round.
Yeah. You used to have the liberty going out, if you was on a committee, you knew what was going to take place, because you had the way saying, now, you go out and investigate, like on the highway. We used to go forty miles and look at a bridge. You knew what you had to vote on. Now you don't. Now come this meeting, I'm still on highway. All I know is what I see when I get here. Now, I just don't appreciate somebody that want to make a lie of me. I don't. And you cannot sit up here and digest all of this stuff and say you know what's in it. If you're going to be true about it, you can. Less than you better than Einstein. And I don't think nobody living that good yet. So I like to see it changed back. If you elected to take care of the people in the county, in your district, you should be allowed to do that. Not somebody else dictating you what you're supposed to do. I don't think that's their craft. That's the way I feel, Bob. And I think like Mr. Boje and the guys that come in on, why is all this rush to get everything done before the name? That's been the case around here, a little. Everything pushed before the new board come. Well, that's show some respect, please.
Mr. Horriff Field?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like how this structure has been set up. I like it a lot. I did, I like the fact that even at the standing committee, there is public participation with the new design of the room here, the meeting room. I think it'll allow people to maybe be more, I won't say excited, but maybe they'll be a little bit more enthusiastic about actually watching the live feeds that are coming in, breaking up the meetings like this. I think it's just a really, really good idea for the public, as well as for the board members. I did have a question. On the reports of standing committee, how will that be designed? How is that going to be presented? Will it be the chairs? Will it be the actual department heads? How will those be presented at the full board meeting? Which I like that a lot.
Starfish is always the chair of the committee.
So it will continue to be the Chair, and the department heads, I mean, will they still be at the meeting, so that if there are any questions during full board, those questions can be answered? I'm just kind of trying to get a feel.
I think the department heads are typically here if they believe there are issues that the board will have questions.
All right, Ralph?
I have two thoughts made. One, I think the COW system has proved itself to be incredibly inefficient, and that's why we're changing it. And secondly, there's no rush now. If we, the earliest possible time that this could be brought before the board would be in October, which is less than a month before the board changes. So let's wait until the new board is in.
All right, anybody want to get in the first round before I go to Mr. Alex for a second comment? All right, Chris?
Just to speak to a couple of the comments. The big one, I think, is the timing. You know, why are we trying to do this now as opposed to leaving for the next board? There's only one reason, and that's that, my understanding is that under the county board rules, the first action that the new board has to take is appointing the Chair, or electing a Chair and appointing committee heads. So we have to know what the committees are going to be before the new board takes office, or we can't do that effectively without having to dissolve committees and re-initiate committees. So I agree, I mean, I think this should be a decision that the next board makes. However, my understanding is that we essentially want to know what the structure of the next board is going to be. We need to know what the rules are going to be for the next board before the board takes the seats, because the first action the board has to take can't be to argue about the rules. It has to be to appoint the members of the committee. So if I'm wrong about that, let me know. But this is not being brought up out of any attempt to, you know, to be disrespectful. It's being brought up now, because my understanding is we have to have these details squared away before the new board takes effect. The other comment I want to respond to was to Mr. Richards and others' comment about the length of the Committee of the Whole meeting. I mean, I agree, these, the COW number two, which is the one that we would be keeping in this proposal, and the one that we're in fact talking about, the one that we're sitting in now, the meetings do get long. The reason that it was proposed to only have one Committee of the Whole was so that board members would still only attend, have to attend three meetings a month, their assigned committee meeting, Committee of the Whole meeting, and a full board meeting. I would be perfectly amenable to changing that, but I'm guessing that a majority of the board probably does not want to go to a committee meeting and two Committee of the Whole meetings and a full board meeting. But I'd be happy to hear otherwise. I think those were the only comments that I can address at this point.
All right, Ms. Rosales?
I would tend to basically not concur with that, because the rules are in place before the new board is set in. So what you're doing is you're allowing time to change that before the new board is set in. And what I'm saying is, let it sit the way we currently have it, and let the new board decide. So the new board will be basically appointed by the new, by the COW committee structure. So they will, in turn, will serve as committee chairs and vice chairs for those six committees that we currently have. So it's not like we don't have any rules, or we don't have any committee structure. We do have that prior to the new board sitting in. When the new board comes in, they have the existing structure. What they're not going to have is this proposed structure prior to them sitting in. So it doesn't logically work, Alexis, the way you're indicating, that we have nothing, and the new board is coming in. So in order to sit the new board, you have to have a committee structure in order to begin with a new board with a new committee structure. Doesn't make sense to me.
Could Pius, could you speak to that? My understanding is that the county board rules have to be adopted at the start of the term.
Well, actually, that's a good question. I'm not sure about the, regarding the language area, that's about where I'm raised, and I don't know about laws like that.
The board rules are in effect, and they could go for six or eight years without being changed. Mr. Alex's point about the organizational meeting is you are going to follow the board rules that are in place, effective December 1st, at the organizational meeting. So if you're going to have small committees, those members would be appointed to those committees at the organizational meeting, as would committee chairs and/or deputy chairs for areas of responsibility. We did change the board rules for this current session of the board, not long before this current session of the board was seated, to the formalized COW structure, which we have followed for the last two years. I think, from my own perspective, we do board orientation in November after the election, based on your county board rules. You will be seated and organized based on the county board rules that are in place. And to change those board rules, first of all, requires at least fourteen days, someone providing to the policy committee fourteen days advance notice of any changes to the rules. I don't think you're going to change the board rules in December or January with the new board. And when we went to this COW structure, it was because the seated board, who had experience of working with the meetings and working with the staff, thought that that was the best structure for the next board. You can change board rules, but you will have organized the board based on one set of rules, and if you change the rules, it could change somewhat how you're organized at a later date. It's doable, it's just that that's what Mr. Alex, I think, would be concerned with.
Kathy?
A couple of thoughts to see, since this is a discussion, and just to put them out for people to mull over and see if it maybe starts resolving some of the issues that have been placed out on the table. Number one, I do not, let's see. Why would it not be possible for the new board, of which it's going to be eighty percent, eighty-five percent of folks who are already sitting on the board, at the organizational meeting, to table the forming of the committees to a month later, and to handle a structural issue right there, because most of the people on the new board know of the situation? And I guess, I was arguing previously for this being done before the new board, but now that I'm listening to things, and the example Miss Bucie just gave, that the previous board put us in this situation of a COW, which she just sort of trumped the argument to do it before the next board.
You could change that if you wanted to.
I know, but inertia sets in, and it doesn't get changed.
That's right.
And, okay. And then the other part, even though I understand the hybrid structure, and it's a very well thought-out structure, but it does not solve one of the things that I hear on both sides of the ledger, whether we're in committee structure or we're in the Committee of the Whole structure, and that is lack of flow of information, so that we get the full picture of the issues that are coming before us. And to me, whether we're in a committee structure or we're in the Committee of the Whole structure, that's the crux of the issue, is that we don't get full enough memos from the deputy chairs or the department heads, or wherever it should be coming from, so that we have the full information when we come to decision making.
I would just like to point out to the board on page fifteen or twenty-seven, the biennial organization meeting is spelled out there in your rules. And on page eighteen or thirty, rule changes and suspension of rules is spelled out. And I think it states that you can't change the rules without fourteen days prior notice to the board. And so my read of that...
You could table it. That's my point. You could table the organizational structure.
I'm suggesting that by Robert's Rules of Order, that the new board could table the organizational, organization of the new board for thirty days. Within that window of thirty days, then the rules change could be put forth, and that would fall within these timelines that are being laid out.
All right, Ward, I think that's a point of order. I think that's a common one. Mr. Horriff Field?
Well, just based on some of the other meetings and special meetings that we've had, when it is just a little bit smaller group that is meeting, I think it's, I think it can be a little bit better meeting, just for the fact that there's not everyone's opinion. And you can attend the meetings if you would like. I think this just is going to give a stronger structure to the full board meeting, and again, if you would like to go to the other meetings and participate in the process. I just think this is going to be a better way to process through a lot of information that we receive, and have a very thorough discussion that is going to be more productive. You know, I see this as a positive, you see it as negative, some of you do, and I think it's unfortunate. and I think it's unfortunate because I think, you know, what we want to accomplish at this county board is productive meetings. And, you know, and I agree with, you know, when some of these meetings are happening and they're four and five hour long, we're losing, there's too much information for us to take in. And fewer comments, but I think it gives us the opportunity to have better discussion on what's happening that's going to be relevant for the full board meeting. So I think that's something we need to carefully consider before we decide that this is something we want to pass on to the other board. I think it's something that, you know, what do we want in the end? Do we want to have something that's going to be productive with input from other board members and doesn't collude you from participation?
Mr. Max, why, professional.
Thank you. It seems to me, Howard, a new board member coming in, I would deeply appreciate having the rules set and not have to deal with these rule changes in the first two or three months of the new board. We have done this in the past. We've set the precedent by setting this cow right before the new board could evolve. So I think it's logical kind of do it, we know what we're doing. And I think as a new board member, a new board coming in, I think I would really appreciate standing there before my new board.
I think there were a couple of tiers to the cow meetings.
And one of the tiers was utilizations of study sessions, which I think we have underutilized because of the budget cuts. Study sessions was a session so that county board, department heads could come in and explain in more detail a specific session that they could explain to us what's going on within that department and engage the public and engage the county board. So I don't think that we've had many study sessions within the cow structure to allow that. I think it's also after almost 100 years of regular committee meetings and 27 board members, people have gotten comfortable, like Lloyd has indicated, with these six committee structures where you only really get, if you don't sit at those committees and you don't have a vote within all six committees, it's not going to be an inclusive committee. It's going to be partial information. So you're going to get a lot of questions at the county board meetings because you haven't sat in all the committee meetings. The second component or the second tier to the cow structure was the elimination of five county board seats. We reduced the county board seats from 27 to 22 to allow a little bit more concise conversation and discussion so that two representatives per district, 11 districts, would be well represented throughout the Champagne County so that the discussion could be easily handled by 22 instead of 27. So now to go back to something similar to what we have, I would even propose changing from 22 back to 27, perhaps, maybe even 34. Why not? Have more representation in this life so that we could never, we could do sleepovers and basically discuss the issues at hand. But I think, you know, the cow meetings allows me at least two weeks to question what's being placed. I was not approached by this change, committee change. Alexis talks about, well, you know, I have assessed most of our county board meetings and, you know, county board members, and, you know, they concur that this change should be placed. Well, he never spoke with me, other than being on the already, what Carter was saying, already in front of us to discuss and to be voted upon next week. So I, I think that we need to be cautious next, next week, the next county board member meeting.
No, just for discussion.
For discussion in October.
They don't have to come back in October.
It will be voted upon when?
At the cow meeting.
At the cow meeting of, of October. And then voted upon at the regular board meeting in October. Yeah, I think that we need to be cautious to change things the way they were. Give the new board an opportunity, two years, to sit with this structure and then out of that structure and go ahead. I know you probably won't get elected again, Ralph. I know you're looking at it like, oh, two years with this structure. Some of us will be here for the next, the next four years, the way the lottery worked out. But basically, give the new board an opportunity to experience both, like this board has had that experience. But the majority, a good group of this board is not going to be here after November.
Mr. Kurtz, you're next.
Thank you. I understand, see, well, I'm not, I might say, I, for information, if that's... You're saying that we should delay having a structure in place for 30 days after the election meeting? To be, no chair, no deputy chair, no vice chair? Please clarify, and I'd ask Mr. Our Chair here to recognize, Pat, because it sounded like for 30 days you didn't want to have any structure put together.
I don't believe that's what I indicated at all. I was responding to the issue of, at the organizational meeting, do we in fact have to then assign all of the chairs or deputy chairs, whatever format we're in and whatever title we will be using then? My suggestion, based on Robert's rules, potentially, what you could do is establish a board chair and a board vice chair. So you could have the meeting, at that meeting then, it could be moved that the committee structure will be tabled for 30 days till the next meeting. And at the same time then, at that organizational meeting, set up the discussion about any structure that the new board would like to pursue. It may end up being a cow, it may end up being a hybrid, who knows? I'm not discussing what the shoe is.
I'll defer to Pius, but then I want to have him sit forward back again.
Okay, I'll put you on the list, but I have Ms. Michaels next. I'm not going to list now.
Are you saying that we would have no chair, deputy chairs, opinion of committees for 30 days? Yes, that's what you're saying. So for the first 30 days, we have no committee meetings because we have no deputy chairs?
It's December.
What's that? Oh, it's December, I'm sorry, you have no meetings in December?
We don't, we typically...
Christmas.
We typically don't have a committee meeting because of the...
All right, Ms. Michaels.
Okay, this has nothing to do with that, but... Something I'd like to see in here, and I kind of picked up on what Mr. Rosales was saying, is that if you so choose to go to the other meetings, as a county board representative, you still should have a say so or a vote. I would like to see that be part of it, if you are participating in these meetings. Even if that's not your assigned meeting, you're still part of representing a group that maybe should at least have some sort of say if you attend that meeting.
I'm not sure that I've seen any mechanism that would allow for optional attendance and voting.
They won't allow it.
Yeah, or meetings.
Because then you could essentially pack a meeting to skew from a vote. One, one second. Pius, you have your hand up.
Now, I'm recognizing Pius, but I got you.
I have a couple, a couple comments. One, as Patty said, a lot of us are returning. So if you want to get people there, they can vote. You don't want to be, we come into a small number. As Mr. Brackles says, they don't know what's going on. They probably don't want to make a decision because they don't have any experience. So why do you want you should vote for it to kind of affect them on November 30? Now, we knew that was a budget.
Over in bed.
No, we're not, yeah. Any more than everybody else is. All seriousness, well, I wouldn't want to come on the board. Mr. Ross?
May I speak, please? Thank you.
I wouldn't want to come on the board and try to decide what the budget's going to be. It's impossible. It could go crazy. We, we do what Patty says, let's, let's tangle this for a month because I don't know what the heck I'm doing. Then do what happened, why was it organizational? Or you tried to change the structure? I don't know what's going on, I have no experience. I think you should set something up, let the county board move that. I mean, they had things done under one or the other. That's what we're here for. Let's do it that way.
All right, Lloyd.
You know, I served on this board for many years, up until 2001, I think, when all of this transpired. Now, I'm wondering, all these other years, we had 27 members. I worked with Mr. Moore, didn't end, a lot of more of them on committees. Didn't have a problem one. With the science, with the rules, that they really messed up. Now, you know, I, I have hoped put a lot of organization together. Now, you can put words on a piece of paper, are they constitutional? Huh? You put all this stuff down here, but nobody want to take it to a constitutional lawyer and see if they fit this organization. I've never seen this before. We always did that. Words can be words, but what are the meanings that you're supposed to be? They might not be saying what you think they're saying because you're not a constitutional lawyer. And I'm not trying to make no bad face of Mr. Jones, but right is right. And don't tell me all, all just, our net person can take the place of a constitutional lawyer. Now, I have hoped set up a many organizations. But we had the respect to go and give it to them and let him prove it. To see, does this fit your organization or not? I don't think anybody in here have constitutional lawyers degree. But you want this big body, Champagne County, to operate on some crap that you put on a paper that you don't even know what it is? It's sad.
All right, they have Pastor Max in this room.
I've only, I've only been here under the cow system, so I have no idea which system is better. And I think I would ask the people who have been here under votes before I would vote as to which way it's better. So I think it is probably a good thing for us to have something set up for the next people because they will have no more idea than I, which is better.
Mr. McGinty.
I've changed my mind. Based on this conversation, I think the next board should take care of this action. Get on with the rest of our meeting, please.
Mr. Rosales, if you're interested in you?
Yes, yeah. Don't let, you have to understand that this is the board that voted for the cow structure. First of all, this is the board that actually approved the, the cow structure meetings. And therefore, now all of a sudden, we're changing it as we're going along. It's not that we do not have anything in place coming in with our year. We already have something that has worked for the last two years in place. So I would say, leave it as it is instead of changing it.
Okay, I, Mr. Ross, do this one? I think I'm going to close this off, though.
That would be wonderful. I just wanted to quickly speak to Ms. Michaels' previous points. What we, what we did when we had committees before, you couldn't vote if you showed up to any committee, but board members who showed up to other committees could, could interact, could be part of the discussion, they just couldn't vote.
Okay, we, we have talked around this quite a bit, so I'd like to move on unless somebody has something new to add to the petition. The point of bringing this was to get this kind of feedback and hear different opinions on this. I am going to move on into the, the, point of the agenda where the chair's report occurs so I can say something without introducing any more discussion. And that is, being on the policy leadership with Carol, we have heard feedback all year long, maybe longer than you know, that there was trouble with the structure. And I think several individuals, myself included, have been thinking about this, have been talking to folks, and in fact, have brought items like this to the Democratic Caucus, which met last week, which everybody was invited to. It had a, had a, an agenda with this item posted on it. This structure has had its problems, and it has had issues in particular areas. So this is an attempt to address those particular areas. And Mr. Rosales, this board is as different from the board that voted for the cow as the board that's seated in the Assembly Board meeting because we've had resignations. I have supported the cow, but I did not vote for it. It was here when I got here almost two years ago. So the intent tonight was not to create a debate. The intent tonight was to create a discussion. And I think we've heard some very good feedback, and we've been able to assess where people are coming from on this. And I think it would be good for us to see this next month because I would, I would agree that it is important that we give the next board something to work with. I don't believe it makes sense to suspend the structure of the, of the board for a month in order to let the new board, which will be 80 to 85% of this board, worry over it again. Because this group has been through it. I've heard Lloyd on many occasions saying we need to get back to a committee structure. And yet, we do know that everybody here is involved in the finances. Everybody should be around when we're talking about finance. So that was the intent, to create a discussion, we got that. If you have further ideas, if you have further suggestions, please bring them to Chris or to I, or to Carol, or to Deb, and we can continue and refine and talk about it some more. So for, for, um, for the consent agenda, I have that A1 and 2, we're unanimous. And I have that two job items that we would, they don't? Okay, well, then you're going to avoid those. So that's it? Then that's it for policy. First item is from Labor Management Health Insurance Committee, recommendation for health insurance and related benefits for the county for fiscal year 2013. Is there a motion for approval by Aaron? Is there a second by Stephanie? Discussion.
If I may, I would just like to introduce to you Brian Menega. Brian and I were the co-chairs of the Labor Management Health Insurance Committee, which existed formally pursuant to our negotiating this with all labor units within Champagne County element this year. And I think it was a very beneficial experience. We have 16 members of the committee. Every labor group is represented on the committee. And even just this week, we sent out a survey to all employees, and I think the engagement by the members of the committee in communicating to employees about the issues related to health insurance has been very healthy, and it certainly is a much more inclusive process to help all of our employees understand issues related to health insurance as we, the committee, have worked and struggled with selecting the best plan for next year. So this recommendation that you have before you tonight was approved. It requires a 75% approval of the committee, which is 12 of the 16 votes. We had only 12 members present last week in our meeting, and all 12 voted yes, so it was unanimous approval of this recommendation that we have before you.
Any questions? Pat.
Is it Astrid and Stephanie who serve on this? I wonder if they could give us just, since they've been sitting in these meetings, give us a little background, your view of what we have here in our documents.
Nobody's one of them, no, I'm just kidding. Astrid, do you want to comment? And could you use your microphone, please?
I, it's pretty well set out. Costs keep going up, and our cost of the loans is this year. And they keep working the numbers, working the amount of sort of little self-insurance, reimbursement cases. working the amount of sort of little self-insurance reimbursement charges, and taking the, uh, deductibles up and then repaying them with this county reimbursement tactic, so that they're keeping the benefits essentially the same and the costs essentially the same when, when the experience did get worse and worse. So I think they've done a marvelous job of dancing around all the problems and coming up with awfully good numbers.
Real quick, what does that do to our net? It looks like some things went up and some things went down. How do we end up this year versus the next year coming up? It looked like some of the deductibles went up. Um, it looked also like maybe, um, some of the copays went up, but then yet, the medicine tiers went down a little bit. So how did that all kind of mesh out again this year versus next year?
Well, um, you're correct, and, um, basically, because we decided to change the plan we were with, with Health Alliance, Health Alliance doesn't offer the same structure in any of their new plans that we had with the plan that we had previously. So that's why Dr. copays went from twenty dollars to twenty-five dollars and, and things of that nature. They have a more comprehensive prescription program, which, um, and, and our broker is here as well, that for our employees, about seventy-five percent of our employees who have prescriptions use generic, and the generics are, are actually going to cost less. So while a Dr. copay went up five dollars, we're going to probably spend less on their prescriptions. Where the copays went up that are substantive, for example, for MRIs, CAT scans, and outpatient hospitalization and inpatient hospitalization, that's where we use the health reimbursement account. So it went from five hundred to a thousand dollars. We're increasing, and, and the out pocket maximum for an individual went from twenty-five hundred to three thousand. So we increased our health reimbursement amount from a thousand to fifteen hundred, so that the employee at the end with those costs will be in the same position that they were previously, yet we were able to keep the premium cost down.
So if I could pull up real quick. So basically, what we spent on healthcare this year is going to be pretty much what we spent on it coming here?
We anticipate a five percent increase. It's on page forty-four of your agenda.
Other questions?
Which is very, very good.
Michael?
Yeah, since Brian, uh, came in tonight, sat here for about an hour and a half. Brian, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to this committee?
When we formed this committee, I've been on the contract negotiations with the Sheriff's Office Law and Justice Division for fifteen-plus years. And just speaking with the members, there's always been a little bit of apprehension on the labor side. Not for me, because I've been in negotiations and I know how health insurance works, but some of the members have always thought, okay, what's the accounting? Are they trying to make this percentage higher than what it really needs to be so that they can make this pay more? But this committee has really, we've had a lot of, lot of fruitful discussion that turned out good. Um, this gives a little ownership for the labor side. That way, they can see that with health insurance, it's not all kept and dried. I mean, the numbers that we started out with, that John negotiated with Health Alliance were tremendously higher than where we ended up at. So the, from my aspect anyway, from the Law and Justice Division, Sheriff's Office, um, we've gotten a lot more positive feedback from this committee than, than before. And we didn't have-
Other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Ron, thank you. I think so. Next up, the treasurer is here, Dan.
Give the board a quick, uh, update on, uh, real estate tax cycle, tax collection. We're supposed to know that May first, we mailed out about seventy-four thousand tax bills in anticipation of collecting about two-hundred-and-eight, over two-hundred-and-eight-five million dollars. After today's work, we are ninety-five point two-nine percent collecting. It's about thirteen million dollars to go. Uh, we have, uh, paid four distributions, and we're going to make our fifth at, at the end of this month. About thirty-eight percent of the entire distribution will be paid this month. For Champagne County, it's about two-point-eight million dollars. We're going to add about where we have ninety-five point two-nine percent collected today. Our last day of flex will be October twenty-fifth, so we've still got a little ways to go. Start taxes, procedures, qualifications, and so forth, uh, first part of October. Right where we should be, and just one last fact for you, uh, over the last thirteen years, flex percentage is averaged ninety-nine point six-six percent. So we're getting personally everything that we expect to get, which is good for tax purposes. My, uh, monthly report is, uh, on my website, so I'd ask that the exempted place be filed for.
There's a motion by Patsy, seconded by, I didn't see the raise, John. Any questions for John, or for Dan? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Is the auditor here? I know it really should not be funny, because that's not a funny issue, but he's not here. Is there a motion to exempt and place the, the report on file by Aaron? Is there a second by Stephanie? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, on to amendments and transfers. First, number one, a transfer twelve dash eleven for eighteen-one-eighty out of the clerk's office to cover election judges working this election cycle in, in fall. Is there a motion for approval by Stan? Seconded by Al. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, a transfer twelve dash twelve for sixty thousand nine-seventy-eight. This is pursuant to approval from, uh, the facilities meeting this month. Transfer available funds for the redo of the Shields meeting. Is there a motion for approval by anyone? By Steve O'Connor, seconded by Tom. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Sorry, I squirm. You gotta be quick. Item number three, an amendment twelve dash forty out of the sheriff's office for thirty-three-five-eighty-two. This is drug forfeiture money that should have gone to the Illinois State Police Forfeiture Division. Is there a motion for approval by Gary, seconded by Aaron? Steve?
Thanks, Brendan. I was just curious, the amounts, accounts should have been sent to the Illinois State Police Forfeiture Division, and then the Illinois State Police issued a draft for the county's portion. Are we at their mercy for some formula that we can't even audit, or how does that all work?
Pius? It's sort of a shell game. Basically, we've got the proper procedure, so we're changing our rules when we do that. And the state does take a small swipe, but not that much. It's mostly that.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I'd like to entertain the next several items, four through thirteen, all revenue neutral, revenue positive. I'd like to entertain an omnibus motion to cover four through thirteen by Diane, so there's, and Max, seconded, um, Pius?
I have to pay for the, uh, the change in the structure.
I'm sorry?
I'm sure the change in the structure, so I'm going to pay for this.
Okay, um, Michael?
Just going to say, this is kind of a big reorganization of county government, bought several million dollars, uh, fifteen employees. I was wondering if Cam could go over this memo of his changes for us, or say, would keep them all who don't have it?
Yeah, we have to, uh, good evening. Basically, what is happening here, first of all, I want to say, these are not new funds to our area. Uh, these are funds that have been coming into the area for, uh, probably for years in some fashion. Um, the federal government does fund workforce development programs. They do require that those are actually done on cooperative basis. So, uh, here in our area, there's something called the Champagne Consortium with Mr. Wible chairs. That Champagne Consortium includes Champagne for Yeracoid and Piast counties. Uh, the Champagne Consortium has been a standalone, uh, organization for a number of years, and the decision by the governing body actually was to move the administration of those federal workforce development dollars to the Regional Planning Commission. In fact, the date of that will be on October first. Um, the reason that you do have, uh, you know, unfortunately, many things the government does aren't, aren't, that are real simple, and the reason that there are a multitude of budget amendments is because there isn't one single source here. There's actually five separate grants. You have ten amendments in front of you, because we need to have five for the even years and five for the odd years in the budget, because the grant years for these programs cannot coincide with the coming fiscal year. So, um, we will be accepting, uh, the current staff of the consortium. Uh, I think we'll accept two folks at this point, um, that will become our T C employees effective October first. Uh, those who may be familiar with the Champagne Consortium, or maybe work in public, it'd be the Illinois Workman Center, which is on Madison Avenue. Uh, we intend to maintain that office as well as the offices in Ford and Piast County. Now, the consortium, the Champagne Consortium currently has an office in Yeracoid County. Uh, we also have an office in Yeracoid County. So at some point, when the leases allow us to do that, I suspect we'll try to consolidate those two offices.
Other questions?
Will become essentially employees for the county. Were they employees of the county before?
Yep, they were not. Uh, again, the Champagne Consortium was a standalone organization. Uh, frankly, I'm not quite sure I can explain why it was done this way, but as I understand, the way they currently do it is they run their payroll through Piast County. So I think technically, these folks may be Piast County employees, uh, but they will be Champagne County employees effective October first.
And they will all be subject to our benefits, structured by, and all that?
Absolutely. Um, they will be subject to, uh, all of the, uh, the same benefits, salary structure, all the things that we all referred to.
Other questions? Anything else on four through thirteen noting Pius's extension? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thanks, Cam. Item number fourteen, a budget amendment twelve dash fifty-one for eighty-two thousand. This is, um, to pay unemployment taxes for fiscal twelve. Is there a motion for approval by Al, seconded by Aaron? Discussion. Michael?
This is a budget amendment, so it's mainly the, uh, public taxes, you know, for your respective businesses.
Yeah, there's a memo explaining that on page eighty-five, but basically, um, there is a one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollar per employee annual increase. We waited until now to do this because we could do a better assessment now that we're going into the fourth quarter and learn exactly what we need for this event. So that might be presented to you at this time.
Other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number fifteen is a budget amendment twelve dash fifty-three for eleven thousand dollars. Uh, also pursuant to the facilities agenda this last week, increased appropriation from court construction for the air conditioning compressor replacement. Is there a motion for approval by Stan? Seconded by Quiz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item sixteen, an amendment twelve dash fifty-four for fifty thousand dollars out of facilities, and this is for the downtown correctional center maintenance that we talked about last week. Motion for approval by Gary, seconded by Al. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And from the addendum, item number seventeen is an amendment twelve dash fifty-five. This is, um, increased appropriation of six-sixty-one-eight fifty-four revenue of sixty-nine-three-one-forty-nine to increase Medicaid revenue for increased daily per diem for the nursing home. Is there a motion for approval? By Patsy, is there a second? By Astrid? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item E was removed from the agenda. Item F is for the, uh, VAC committee. I'd like to entertain omnibus motion to consider all of the items. They're all interrelated. And so, uh, by, a motion by Lloyd, seconded by Stan. Sorry, Ralph. Um, any discussion on any of those items, Pius?
On the budget, the salary for the, for our, uh, uh, thank you. The first, I'll, that benefit question?
No, this is a general corporate fund department budget, so benefits are paid out of who respected funds.
Well, what, then that pays the salary?
That salary, I'm right.
Other questions?
Al? Not a question, just the statements. Uh, we've gone too long without having, uh, business posts. Uh, these are our veterans. There are a number of women in here who have fought for the country, put their lives on the line, and when they come home, they have found less than a welcome return. Uh, some of them are free to gen, uh, homeless. Uh, this organization is something that, uh, I think we really need to pass. Uh, it's important for our value system and our moral system. These, these men and women, and there are women involved as well, who have placed their lives on the line, something, the very least we can do is to pass this for their, their, their future advocacy.
Any other comments? Ralph?
I'd just like to thank the members of the board for putting up with all of the, pulling in all the controversies we had over this, coming up to this point.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there Ralph? Patsy?
Um, I agree that this is very important. My concern is the salary, um, forty thousand dollars to annual eighty thousand dollars of funds. I want to know on the rank of that salary when it was brought to us, so that presents a problem.
Hope no again. Chris?
I was also going to mention something about that. I think the key here is that the, uh, reading the job description of the proposed superintendent position, uh, it's apparent that the superintendent is responsible for doing a lot more than just allocating that eighty thousand dollars. And in fact, probably the most significant value that that person will bring to Champagne County veterans is having someone who can serve as a resource and a clearinghouse for identifying other assistance from other sources that is available to veterans. So that, you know, the, the eighty thousand dollars in direct assistance is great, but I think the real value of this position is going to come in identifying the whole continuum of services that are available to veterans.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up, County Administration report.
The, uh, general corporate fund projection report is at your seats this evening. Um, it remains fairly consistent with where it has been. Um, the sales taxes are coming in at a rate where we would expect them to achieve, do just slightly better than what was budgeted for the year. Uh, we remember state reimbursements were over for eleven months of revenue this year, which is why it shows the four-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollar deficit. The only other one I would point out at this time is general government, which is fees revenue. And it looks like it will be down by almost three-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, which is more than it has looked like in the past. We added three-hundred thousand dollars of revenue to the budget for fees, um, this past month for the rental housing support fee. So what that tells me is the rental housing support fee has been coming in, and we didn't have a budget that reflected what it was really going to be. And this probably means that other fees revenues, particularly within the criminal justice system, are probably down more than previous reports might have been. So I would just point that out to you. Overall, it looks like we should receive ninety-nine percent of our budgeted revenue, which is a threshold of about two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. On the expenditure side, uh, similarly, it stays fairly consistent. We're underspending in most areas. We expect that we will overspend in postage and purchase document stamps at this point in time. I would point out to you that the underspending in personnel, um, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand in regular salaries and wages, and underspending of, with the combination of salaries and overtime in the sheriff's operation, almost two-hundred thousand dollars. That's probably going to change, because the sheriff contacted me today to let me know he wants to bring an emergency by the transfer to you in September, because his situation with squad cars is becoming dire. He has over, I believe, thirteen vehicles with over a hundred thousand miles on them, and he's beginning to have some serious concerns. Knowing that he's saving a hundred thousand dollars in this year, over a hundred thousand dollars in this year's fiscal twelve personnel line, he's going to request a transfer of that money to his expen- that money to his expenditure capital line so that he can replace an additional squad car guest this year. You don't have that tonight, I'm just giving you a heads up that that is probably, you're gonna probably see that at the September twentieth county board meeting as a board group transfer. Overall, the final summary still looks like we should end this year revenue positive on the projected side by about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which places our any fund balance when we subtract out the outstanding nursing home loan at thirteen point five percent, which is a solid position for us to be in. And then the budget change report on the back page just shows changes again that we've made throughout this fiscal year again. For as late in the fiscal year as it is, this is a much shorter list than it was three, four, or five years ago this week.
Questions? Motion to accept in place by Stan, seconded by Pius. Sorry, Max. Any other questions for Deb? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, you're gonna revisit the county clerk positions because the personnel policy requires that they be approved by policy and forwarded to finance for recommendation to become board. So what we're looking for right now is the motion for finance, which is on which eleven of your addendums.
Is there such a motion? By Patsy, seconded by Ron. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, one thing that the county board needs to do for fiscal twenty thirteen health insurance is determine the contributions to premiums for the non-bargaining employees. Those contributions are determined for all the bargaining employees within their respective labor contracts. You will see a recommendation on page one sixteen of your packet where I am recommending for fiscal twenty thirteen that the non-bargaining employees be required to contribute ten dollars per month towards the single premium and that the county would contribute thirty dollars per month towards the employee family premium, which is consistent with what was negotiated for F O P law enforcement sergeants and court security.
Is there a motion for approval? By Max, seconded by Quin. Discussion. Chris?
I'm giving just a second to find the side. In the recommendation of the healthcare committee, there was talk of a survey being done with regard to going from a two-tier system to a four-tier system. If that happens, my assumption is that this, it would also apply, it would also be an issue for the non-bargaining unit. We would have to help with contribution amounts for each of the four tiers rather than just the two tiers.
No, because the way the contracts are written, it states that it's a thirty dollar contribution towards dependent coverage. So our read of that is that it doesn't matter which type of dependent coverage is selected that we would contribute thirty dollars to dependent coverage. If we go to four tiers over the long term, I would suggest that's something we would probably wanna revisit, but the way we read the contracts right now, that's the way it would be interpreted.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to change this if we did go to a four-tier system?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item five.
Okay, for item five, it was in your packet, but I would ask you to look at the one that's at your desk this evening because the numbers have changed since last Thursday. So this is just an overview for the twenty thirteen general corporate fund budget. The first page gives you an overview of the general categories of revenues and the total budget at thirty-two point five million dollars. The second page is a similar overview of expenditures by category and a budget of thirty-two point six million dollars in expenditure. The graphs are really just to give you, to provide you with some assistance of how and where your money goes and where it comes from. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. The fourth page just shows for each of the general corporate fund departments, the actual expenditure history for each of those departments, and the graph at the bottom of the fourth page shows, demonstrates by groups of expenditure functions where the money is spent in the general corporate fund, and you can see that clearly, the justice and public safety offices are the substantial drivers of the general corporate fund budget. The page five is just to give you an overview of our history with regard to revenue and expenditure, and I would point out that even with twenty thirteen, we are just beginning to edge back up to where we were in two thousand nine and still less than where we were in two thousand eight, and over the last three fiscal years, we have been able to rebuild the fund balance fairly well. The current budget, as it is presented to you, has a one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar deficit, which is equal to about zero point four percent of the total budget. The fund balance projection for twenty thirteen, based on where we believe twenty twelve will end, even if we paid out the outstanding loan to the nursing home, we would end with a fund balance of four point two million, twelve point nine percent of the fiscal twenty thirteen budget, which is at or slightly above our fund stated fund balance rule of twelve point five percent for the general corporate fund. So, things that have not yet been determined in the information that's presented on all those preceding pages are none of the program change requests which were presented to you during our legislative budget hearings have been included in the general corporate twenty thirteen budget at this time. They are listed there for your information and for any direction that you would want to give with regard to those. Additionally, the only revenue item that I am aware of that you have the discretion to increase over what's been projected for all the other revenue lines in the general corporate fund is the marriage license fee, which could be increased from thirty to seventy-five dollars. That would generate an additional forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars in revenue. And finally, on the last page, if that were done, that would bring the expenditure deficit to eighty-two thousand six thirty-six, which is a quarter of one percent of the total budget for fiscal twenty thirteen. I do have a recommendation with regard to the marriage license fee. It was included in your packet, and I guess if the board were going to take some direction on that particular item, it would be beneficial if that were done now.
Gary, you got a question?
Yes, I'm not sure if it's programmed at this time, but the official items that have been requested, are we almost to watch the X-ray?
Can you speak up? I'm sorry, I can't.
I'm going to ask a question about the additional funding request. The coroner's request of fifty-three thousand dollars for the X-ray machines, I understand that's almost a must to do, is that correct? Or we're old on that?
Coroner's not here to answer.
The first time the coroner made me aware of that equipment request was during this budget cycle. I guess the equipment failed this year. He had not previously listed it in his capital asset listing, and I do not believe he had previously requested that equipment when we went through the process of establishing the morgue facility. So, but I do understand he said that the equipment doesn't work, and it certainly does have a negative impact on his operation if that equipment is not working properly.
Thank you. Max?
The marriage license in fifty mile radius, how do you compare Champagne County versus other counties?
I'm sorry, I'd be happy to check into that.
My question, my question would be, is any marriages performed in Champagne County how do you get a champagne marriage license?
Yeah, this is the marriage license fee for Champagne County. If you get your marriage license in Champagne County, regardless of where in Champagne County you get married, that's the fee.
How do you, if you were married, so in Champagne County, the licenses outside of county?
No, if you get married in Champagne County, you'd have to obtain the license in Champagne County.
We put the numbers together for neighboring counties last year. The ability to raise the fee to seventy-five dollars was part of the statute that created the ability to levy a fee at all for civil unions and civil unions for first license last year. And I don't have a specific recollection of all of those fees, but we surveyed every county that was surrounding us, and they were all increasing, and my recollection was do that sixty or seventy-five dollar.
Excellent, thank you, Pius.
Really, we, I'm changing the marriage license for the people, and we're reading from five, but the show will be here.
That's a motion by Pius, is seconded by Aaron. Discussion. Michael?
God, and I follow up with what the clerk said. Some of our comps from last year, like Yoriya that we cited, that we decided not to raise it, then turned around the next couple of months after we said that, raised it again. So I think this has been pretty standard, at least across that city.
Astrid?
I think it's a real hardship for a lot of young people to do it. I don't like to see it exacted down for that.
Stan?
I'm just not in favor. We just raised it a year ago. It's not a big money maker. I think as government, you know, when people are getting married, they're taking on enough of the financial crisis by doing so that, you know, not that this is gonna break the bank, but just because we can do it, that's all I ever hear. I don't think we need to just continually raise taxes and fees because we need the money. We need to find ways to operate within our.
Patsy?
Do you have any idea what is the actual cost for your office to handle this transaction?
I believe that the last time the county did a cost study, this fee was included in that because at that point, a cost study was required in order to set it. And at that point, the county set it at twenty dollars. I don't anticipate that our change, that our expenses have increased significantly since then. In fact, I think they're probably going down. And to be clear, I'm not advocating.
No, I understand.
Either way, I'm.
Right, I understand. Well, I've expressed to my caucus and to others outside of the caucus that it troubles me tremendously that there is a profligate within our county on many of our elected bodies to raise fees and taxes in a regressive manner and just to generate money. I mean, school board's done it, champagne's done it, and now we're about to do it, and I simply cannot support it. I did send out a suggestion of setting it at two tiers, one tier at the present price and the second one up to seventy-five, and proof of the putting that you need to apply for the lower rate can be, the sum of the incomes showing by a ten forty. We do that for property tax fees. It's not unusual process to do that. I didn't get favorable response from my fellow caucus members, but I just simply can't support it for the generation of forty-five thousand dollars.
Max, then Ralph.
I guess I would be looking at just the, you know, generating. My mission would simply be that, that any way you pay for services, services are rendered to those individuals who are asking for service makes sense. I would prefer that over when we look at any real estate tax increase that we would hold on there, when you're asking for a service.
Ralph, then Tom.
Roy, how old, when was that twenty dollars fee? When did you get the, what did you do now?
I think that you set the fee for marriage licenses at twenty dollars in two thousand and six or two thousand and seven.
Two, two thousand and two.
Two thousand and two, when you did the last max.
What?
Two thousand and two, and then last year, two thousand and eleven, it went from twenty to thirty.
When you made the estimate, when you made the study in town?
I think that cost study was in two thousand and two.
Tom?
Hey, here. My concern is what Roy just said, which is, we wanted, we supposed to raise it seventy-five dollars. The study, two thousand and two, said it was the actual cost of providing a service, storage, etc., was twenty dollars, and he believes that that cost may have actually gone down based on efficiencies. That bothers me because then, what we truly are doing is raising this as a tax, which is not the worst thing in the world, if we are also willing to not, all of the things on the wish list that are there, if we're also willing to say no to those things on the wish list, I'm afraid that people are going to say yes to some of them, and so this is all gonna be a wash anyway. We're gonna have the marriage license fee pay for the X-ray machine, etc. That's the problem I'm having is, I think that the fees should be related to the actual cost of the services that they are providing. Otherwise, they are simply taxes, which is, I don't think taxes are the worst thing in the world. They're the cost of civilization. I just, I don't quite get this one. I need to get convinced.
Are we about ready to just roll call this? I just wanna roll call it, and because everybody's got their opinion, are we ready to go? All right, let's do that. If I get us a roll call, please. Thanks, Roy.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Moser?
No.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Petrie?
No.
Wissenberry?
No.
Richards?
Yes.
Rosales?
No.
Schrader?
Weibel?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Vinzel?
No.
Berksen?
No.
Bets?
No.
Carter?
No.
Esri?
No.
Holderfield?
Yes.
James?
No.
Jay?
Baby.
No.
If it gets married.
Kurtz?
I'm sorry, what was Mr. Jay's vote?
No.
No, okay, mine is the same.
Langenhain?
No.
That's not a proposal.
Maxwell?
No.
Michaels?
No.
Magenti?
Yes, motion favors.
Becca, this is the September Finance Committee meeting. This is the time that you should provide the administrator with any direction you want that to be taken with regard to the general corporate fund budget for fiscal twenty thirteen. So with no, if there's no further direction given, the budget will come back to you in October to be received and placed on file based on what has been presented to you up until this point.
Any comments? John, I would like to leave for you as not tinker with it anymore. Can I disagree with that? Didn't think so. Thank you. We are good, so we will move on. Thank you very much, good discussion. Onto other business on the addendum. Item number one with H is a request for approval of the First Amendment to the Agreement for Healthcare Services at Champagne County Juvenile Detention Center. So a motion for approval by Steve Moser, seconded by Al Kurtz. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have closed sessions. Is there any other business before we go into closed session? Who has the motion? Mr. Bets?
Actually, we have one more item on the other business. Did you do the health care? We got that done? Oh, I'm sorry.
We're way ahead of it. Mr. Bets?
Go ahead. Was it done? No. Take your gavel and go over there.
I note that we entered closed session, we sought to find I L C S one point, smash two pair and see one, consider the appointment of a compensation, discompliance or dislist of specific employees of the public body, actually, we would be following the public screen being present, county administrator, county auditor, reporting secretary.